Okay. That's cool. Does that plan to go visit the public? So does it now, or?
No, not yet.
Nah, not yet.
Maybe. Yeah. Never been there.
Got a few, couple more people today.
Yeah.
Couple more.
I don't think I'm ready or...
Expecting a crowd?
No, I expect, we had zero public here last time.
I think we already seen you.
I remember those days. No one would be there.
Recording in progress.
There we go, another minute. Seconds up there. Oh, there we go.
Yep, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight. There we go.
It's six thirty, like to call the April twenty-eighth meeting of the Woodman Park Planning Commission to order. Let me take a little call, please.
Chairman Horsfield.
Here.
Lee Brown.
Here.
Carol Lurie.
Here.
Ken Kennedy.
Here.
Barry Larson.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, approval of the minutes. Any comments or corrections?
I have a correction on page five of the minutes. There are two motions on that particular page that we did. And we approved the site plan twice for both motions. One is for a PUD amendment with a site plan review. And the other one is for a subdivision, preliminary plat, a site plan review. I think the first motion, Karen, and correct me if I'm wrong, was really for a PUD amendment of the final PUD development plan that was included with the back.
The PUD and the site plan go together in that first motion. And then the second one, I believe, is just the preliminary plat.
Just preliminary plat?
I believe so. We can check.
Okay.
If you would prefer. Or if other memories are holding strong.
Based on what Karen said, it doesn't sound material if we did it twice. And it may be necessary to do it twice.
Okay, that's fine.
Based on Karen.
I just noticed that we were doing it twice.
Okay, so would you like staff to check those on how the recording? Or?
I, you know, I thought it was because we were doing the PUD. We were also doing the vital PUD. We did have comments in the staff report as well as conditions. So I thought, well, that's what we did. Check it and use your discretion.
Okay.
Anything else? You have some motion?
All motion.
Approval?
Did you get a second or seconded? They didn't fit in here.
Okay.
Are you going to clarify any motion for me?
Is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Yes.
Correct, and Lee seconded. And I guess it's pending the review. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you. I think this is the public hearings. We have a continuation of the March tenth and April fourteenth CUP hearing for Tammerack Contractor Services. Consider a request by Skip Howes and Tammerack Land Company for a conditional use permit CUP pursuant to section eighteen oh nine oh nine oh G about one.
One moment, sir.
Yes.
We have, we have...
Feedback.
There was comments in the chat questioning the sound. But I guess folks could not hear us. So before we continue, I thought we should...
No, it's prudent.
Are folks out in, in the Zoom able to hear us now? We should probably talk a little bit to see if they can hear us.
Yeah, I guess that makes sense. So if you can hear us, if you could acknowledge that. We're trying to get it set up for you.
So quick check, will we go around?
Testing, one, two, three, four, five.
Our microphone says we're muted.
Seven. On the screen, David, it says it's muted on the Zoom. I don't know if that's your screen or Karen's. Testing, one, testing, testing, testing. Testing, one, two, three.
It should be on now, it just switched. There, no, it's muted again. It's muted again.
Checking, one, two. Checking, one, two, three. We're testing, one, two, three, four.
Ken, where you pointed to was right. It is, under the picture of the group of us, it's got a little red bar. It went off for a moment, then came back on.
Seven, eight. Yeah. One, two, three, four.
Karen, is that on your screen?
Can you see what we're talking about? In the photo, in the picture, the lower left of the photo of us, it's got the red, it's got the...
I've got the muted.
Got the mute symbol.
I've seen this happen before. I may need to restart the session in Zoom. So let me get that a try and see if that corrects the issue. All right?
Okay, then we'll...
Do a quick message out to those folks to let them know.
Yeah.
I apologize to everyone.
Recording in progress.
If he doesn't get it spread out, can we proceed or?
Um, I believe so.
I don't quite know.
Translicit written comments, I guess, for as good as we can do.
Is there a statutory requirement for us to Zoom?
I think we potentially have concerns since this was noticed as a hybrid meeting and there are folks trying to attend via Zoom. So I personally think we have an obligation.
I wonder if I can pick up the audio through your laptop if we're loud enough in that house sound here. Otherwise, we type everything.
It's exploding.
Could encourage revving, which might be very useful.
It'd be a very short conversation for who we're talking to.
Yes, no, maybe.
I think you're not able to see anything at all, David.
Recording in progress.
Just go for it.
Are you able to see the meeting in real?
Testing audio again.
You might have to slip it over. Maybe she's getting back in.
I see where we left off.
We don't have the monitors showing the meeting, right? Oh, very good.
Poor Dave, I think he's ready to go home. His computers obviously are. They're like, now we're done. We should have stopped already.
It's great when it works. We were just talking about that.
Yeah.
But if anybody can do it here.
Yes.
Can I ask, is this moved in use since the election? Have all the meetings been?
Yes.
Because I know we unplug some things. Here for the election.
I was using a two different, a different platform. There were two different meetings. And in one meeting, I hadn't, my, my other camera would not work. And in the second one, it was fine. And it's not like it changed anything in between. So there are gremlins.
Is there a way to check it before the meeting starts?
We thought we did.
Worked well.
We tried.
So somebody felt...
Recording in progress.
Are you able to host? Do you know, David?
Here it comes.
I mean, I sent, I thought I sent a message out, but there has been some replies. So I don't have to actually turn it on.
She can get back on, get back in.
Recording stopped.
Now we can talk.
Can't incriminate yourself so much, huh?
The days before Zoom.
Two of the surgicalities where both of us are set up to potentially run the meetings. So in terms of how our Zoom accounts are set up, so.
Have you talked with Michael Lawson about the short-term removal workshop?
Not since, whatever was the last time.
You met with him?
The second meeting. Yes, things have changed. Karen said last week it's supposed to be before the next council meeting.
I'm going to cover that in announcements.
Is that, is that still impending before the next council? So like six o'clock or so before the next council meeting?
Right before you have...
Five forty-five.
We won't steal your thunder.
For the record. Are you able, there you are, David.
Looks like progress. Ms. Carol Laura.
Checking audio. I see that mic weren't...
The unmuted is gone.
Neil's mic is on. Is your mic on, Karen?
Yes, my mic is on.
Yeah, your laptop mic. Your lap...
I did notice on the screen before that mute over on the left-hand side at the bottom is crossed off. And I'm assuming you hit that, you can mute. Now you muted again.
Unmute made it mute.
Unmute. There you go. Checking, checking, one, two. They're getting an echo, but that means there's another mic on somewhere.
It needs, it's still muted again.
Turn the mic off. Can we turn the computer off?
I think David muted it.
Okay, that's good. Just don't touch any.
Karen's muted, so.
Now it went back to mute.
We lost over ten views.
I went to watch Jeopardy.
Stop running for Carol and all that.
Don't tell me how it ends.
Well, you know, Matilda's going to win again.
She's, she's good.
She is.
When I joined, I joined with my audio on. So this is normally on, you, on the screen here. Otherwise, you get that reparation.
Okay.
Do we have any participants online?
Can you hear me? Are any mics working?
Checking, one, two.
Recording in progress.
Well?
Audio test.
Very good.
It's our legal counsel.
Yay.
Well, that's good.
Recording in progress.
I was able to join.
I think folks are equal here, aren't they?
Kenny, can you hear, just can you hear our talking? Does it come through?
Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. No. So just video.
I think the only one that wasn't here there. There's Mark and there was Nora.
There's a couple, like, read the line and everything.
Okay, we have getting a good try out there.
I think you're going to have to unmute it. Do you want us to turn off all our mics and just talk really loud?
If you had to record it somehow.
No, I, I think we should be okay.
Okay.
No, let us know, I'm sure.
Okay.
Okay, any of the attendees on Zoom hear us? Can you confirm that?
Testing audio, one, two.
You guys go ahead and speak.
Testing. Hello. One, two, audio check. Testing, one, two. Audio check.
Somebody, it sounds like they, it sounds like a no, doesn't it?
It sounds like I'm leaving.
I logged in, I can't hear any audio.
No, we cannot.
Checking, one, two. Check, here we go. Oh, we're getting the echo. Is David's your mic on? Can you turn yours off or is it just leave that one on? Now they can hear us. Well?
They can hear us now, we're just having a...
We can do with an echo.
Let's, let's turn our mics off unless we're speaking. See if that can reduce the...
I'm sorry, what was your suggestion?
Turn off the mic.
If we, if we're not speaking, if we turn the mics off, maybe we won't get the echo.
I don't think the mics are the issue.
Okay.
It's the now, the second, second mic on, I heard.
It's not that annoying.
Hi. Well, it's... It's six fifty. Like to resume our planning commission meeting. I apologize for the echo. Technical issues common, I guess. We're opening a public hearing for the continuation of the CUP twenty twenty-one dash zero three Tammerack Contractor Services through consider a request by Skip Howes and the Tammerack Land Company for a conditional use. Karen, do you have a presentation for staff?
I do have a summary.
There, recorder is...
So, as was announced, the site was in front of the planning committee back in March. And at that time, the commission directed the applicant to go back and work with staff to finish revising a few conditions of approval and bring back a single concept plan that documents the existing site conditions and shows the proposed changes, including the second driveway, site usage, fence locations, and setbacks. And then within your supplemental report, I included in the packet, just included a quick summary as a reminder that the whole purpose of this was to bring an existing non-conforming use into compliance. And it was the request for the second driveway at the east end of the property that triggered the need for the conditional use application. This property, the building, were developed at the time. It was annexed in nineteen ninety-seven. And in your staff report, there was a picture from two thousand and four that shows the site conditions at that time. And while the existing use was contractor services, there was no evidence of outside storage at that time. So in addition to the second driveway, the applicant is wanting to make some site improvements with the addition of millings, which will provide a better surface for the drive and storage areas. So at the commission's direction, the applicant did meet with city staff, which was myself and the city engineer on March thirty-first. And we reviewed the site development at that time. And we had a good conversation about the need to provide water quality retention for the existing site as well as the need to address the change in the surface area that will occur with the addition of the second driveway and adding millings to that driveway storage area. Mr. Howes has continued to work with his engineers to finalize that site plan and get his drainage report finalized. So at the time of the staff report went out, there was a couple of attachments. And I did get a little better, clearer picture of those and have those here in front of you this evening. So this first one was what Mr. Howes was referring to as the zoning compliance. So on that, he is showing the area he has identified for landscaping and open space around the perimeter of the property. And you may recall that this is Research Drive here along the southeast corner of the site. The southeast side. The current entrance is down here along the south.
We're not seeing much, seeing much, Karen, Karen. Make sure you're streaming.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
This is really challenging with the echo. And I don't know why it went away for a short shift.
You turned the stand, stand. And they weren't hearing anything.
Oh, no. Out of curiosity, did they hear the echo? I'm excited to know. But on the site plan here, I was trying to show that this is Research Drive that comes in here along the...
Lost your video.
Lost it again.
He shows on screen.
If David's going to mute, if Karen wants to unmute her mic while she's talking, people could probably hear her. Scroll up to the top where it says view options. Over right and to the left a little, to the green part. Oh, hold it there. And it'll open up and you'll get your unmute. You give your mouse to that green bar at the top. There you go.
What, what do you, what do you?
Did it not open?
I showed my mic as unmuted.
You unmuted your mic?
Yes. I don't know if anybody can hear me. That's how it's said. So.
I'm sure you're good.
Okay. So I was trying to say the Research Drive comes in here...
Your other mic is off, Karen.
Yes.
Might go ahead and turn it back on while you're talking, so it's...
It's typically when we get...
It'll be fine.
Okay. Six times the charm. Here on the eastern side of the page, the right side of the page, is where Research Drive comes in around the property and loops across the bottom. And so this, the lower end of the page is the existing driveway. And this particular page is what Mr. Howes was referring to as the zoning compliance plan. So within that, in these green balloon areas, he's showing where the landscaping and open space would occur on the site. He's also identified where the existing building is and where some of this storage area is, as well as some other storage. So this is really more about zoning, zoning compliance. And then on the next one, is where he shows the second driveway coming in. It was part of committing compliance with a conditional use permit. He's showing two possible fence locations. The first one was along the property line.
You lost your video.
You're probably okay, Karen, if David's mic.
Yeah.
Trying to troubleshoot that, Karen, it's in their hearing.
So the first one option was along the existing property line. However, our fence regulations state that for a six-foot solid fence, that actually needs to be back out of the front yard setback area. And in this particular zone, it's a 50-foot front yard setback, so that would move that fence further back here in on the property. Given the tree stand that is here along the front of the property, as much as you can see through that into the site, with the addition of that fence, that would take care of that screening requirement, as well as still provide a more aesthetic view from the street to see those trees before you go into the fence. So behind that is then where the storage yard would be, and at this scale, it cannot be used. And then Mr. Howes was talking about addressing the site as a whole, so looking at just over 70% of the site as being impervious area, and that would be the figure that would be used within that preliminary drainage report and what the site drainage should be designed for. And given the natural contours of the site, there's also looking at this area back here on the northwest side as a lower spot adjacent to the gully gully, utilizing that for part of the overall detention flow to improve water quality, or to address the water quality issues. And so with all of this, you know, looking at what needs to happen to bring the site into compliance, there's a couple of different items that would need to be constructed or added. So staff's recommendation is to put everything together and achieve one zoning development permit, where the infrastructure for the water quality detention that would then address the surface changes with the addition of millings and the second driveway, and then the addition of fencing, all of that can be included under one multi-use zoning development permit. That way, all those things can be constructed simultaneously, and it would also help with fees for what Mr. Howes would need to pay related to that zoning development permit. So with that, in your supplemental report, I just recapped the original staff recommendation. And then with that, also acknowledge that at that time, there were items in that list of conditions that really were things that would be addressed at the time of subdivision and not completely, or not directly related to the conditional use permit. So that has been cleaned up, and so for you this evening, we have a more succinct set of conditions. And so the recommendation was for the planning commission to recommend approval of the conditional use permit based on the findings in the staff reports and is presented at the public hearings, both in March, both in March and tonight, for contractors and construction services use on 4.22 acres in the west half of the southwest quarter of Section 12, Township, Town 12 South, range 69 West of the 6th Avenue, St. Paul's Meridian, lying southwest of Tamrec Tech Park, Row 2, and lying northwest of Tamrec Tech, Row 1, also known as 1010 Research Drive, in the service commercial zone, subject to the following 13 conditions. The first is that prior to November 1st, 2022, the property owner must clean all litter and debris from the site. Those are items such as no truck, concrete, and other debris. Number two, the final drainage report must be approved by the city engineer before a grading permit or zoning development permit can be issued. Number three, a grading permit is required for surface changes or disturbances that exceed 7,500 square feet in the area. Number four, a single multi-use ZDP is required for site improvements, including water quality detention, surface changes with the addition of millings, the second driveway, and the fence screening. A final concept plan of the site is necessary in order to issue this ZDP. Number five, all applicable fees are to be paid, such as the stormwater fee, based on the impervious surface area at the time the ZDP is issued. Six, the final concept plan for the site shall be submitted that share the location and dimensions for the material storage areas and drive areas, equipment parking areas for rolling stock, water quality detention facilities, screening and finishing details compliant with reusable code Section 18.12. 25% of the area is landscaping, 10% of that area is reserved for snow storage. Seven, hours of operation shall be limited to dawn, which is not earlier than 7:00 a.m., to dusk, no later than 9:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. After-hours emergency operations are permitted, subject to emergency requirements. Eight, all lighting, exterior lighting, if any, shall be downcast and shielded with a temperature of 3,000 Kelvin or warmer, and shall not exceed the 25-foot in height. Nine, uses shall not include any activity involving the use or storage of flammable or explosive materials unless protected by adequate firefighting and fire suppression equipment and by such safety devices as normally be used, and handling any such material is approved for the Northern Delaware County Fire Department, Fire Protection District. Ten, no smoke, odor, vibration, glare, or particulate emissions shall be permitted, which can cause damage to health, animals, vegetation, or affect properties beyond the parcel boundaries. Eleven, notwithstanding any conditions herein, this conditional use permit does not grant noise relief permit, with the use in businesses shall at all times be subject to reusable code Section 9.41 Noise. Twelve, pursuant to reusable code Section 18.33.180, at least 15% of the parcel's ordinary is open space. And thirteen, pursuant to code Section 18.33.180D, healthy existing significant trees shall be preserved to the extent reasonably feasible and may be used to satisfy landscaping and maintenance requirements.
Very good.
I have a question.
Yes, Karen.
To 25% landscaping, what does that imply? It's 70% impervious, 25% landscaping, 15% open space. I'm just trying to...
Hit the math.
Trying to follow it.
When we look at the landscaping requirement, there's areas of the site that cannot be... that need to be remaining, you know, as landscaping. So if you start with 100%, and you take 25% out, which is the landscaping, then you've got 75% left. And so what was the other...
15% open space.
Yeah. That open space and the landscaping can overlap. So that's where that comes in.
Okay.
Do you look at that floodplain area, is it open space?
I...
No.
No?
By definition in the code, it can't, open space has to be usable, unless you want to park in the floodplain, I'm not sure you want to use it.
Okay.
Ethan, before Skip comes up, I have a question about, I don't remember where the dawn-to-dusk operations requirement came from. Is that a code requirement or for commercial storage area?
I don't know that it's spelled out in the code specifically like that, given that you have residential properties in close proximity, and it's one that I have seen in other staff reports, so it seems to be a more accepted condition that the commission has recommended in the past. So that's where that came from, something that has been used previously. And then if you recall at the last meeting, there was concern about that ability to respond to emergencies, since the contractor that shares the site land excavating does respond to, you know, utility breaks and such. So they, once they're sure they have that ability to respond, so that's where that emergency warning provision came from.
Any other questions for staff at this point?
Related to condition number four, the single multi-use ZDP...
Larry, did you turn your mic on? Sorry.
Sorry about that. Not better. Regarding condition number four, single multi-use ZDP is required for the site improvements, you're not anticipating those site approvals to be installed before the issuance of the ZDP, you're just going to see it on the plan, correct?
I'm sorry, do you have a question one more time?
You're not requiring these improvements to be installed prior to the issuance of the ZDP?
No, no, the ZDP is necessary in order to do the work.
Okay.
So the zoning development permit, wanted to make sure that everything that's going to be done, you know, the fence, the driveway, the detention facilities, those can be split apart into separate zoning development permits, but there is a cost savings if they are, not a big one, but a cost savings if they're put together. And that also helps to make sure that all of those items are duly addressed. I know the applicant has a desire to get the driveway in absolutely first, and then sort out some of those other, finalize those other things a little bit later. But since the whole point of this really is to get the applicant the driveway as well as bring it into compliance, staff's recommendation was to tie those things together.
Mr. Howes, we'd invite you to come address the commission.
Okay, didn't know if I had to turn it off. Skip Howes, representing Tamrec Land Company. While I'm opening, could you turn the first site plan on, which would I call the zoning compliance plan? As Karen said, we were working over the last 40 days or something like that, had a couple meetings with Ben, the engineer, and Ben made some good suggestions with regards to some things we might do and how we might separate some things out. And you'll be hearing me mention something called a porous land detention area in the second plan, which was designed to do certain things and allow us to be able to handle certain issues on a minor basis as things progress. So what I wanted to do is go over this with you. I'm old school, guys. You know, technology works when it's printed. So if you look at the box in the bottom-left corner that says Tamrec Contractor Services Zoning Compliance Plan, this plan was designed to give you the information you asked about at the last point, is what are the zoning rates required, where are we in compliance with that? So with regards to that, we have the site. We have a front set yard, front setback of 50 feet from Research Drive and a side yard setback of 15 feet. That would be the property line between us and the bus barn to the east. That would be for a primary building that would be built in the future. If there is something called an accessory building, that can go within four feet. So I have a primary building on the site, so if I built another one, it potentially could go within four feet of the property line of the bus barn, depending upon how that accessory building is defined. The rear yard, which is up against the floodplain, is zero. So I think that answers our questions with regards to setback. The zoning requirements that we have for this zone require 10%, 25% landscaping area, and that is 33,864 feet based on the site. Then it requires 12.5% of that area to be along Research Drive against adjacent residential properties. That's in your code. So 12.5% of the 25% is actually within the setback area. And then we have 15% of open space, which as Karen said, can be included in a landscaping area of 20,318. So we're actually defining the landscaping area at about 62 feet into the property. That's why if you see that green scurly line, it goes a little bit beyond the 50-foot setback line. So as we exist right now, as far as the setbacks and the landscaping and open space requirements are concerned, we meet the current code. The current natural landscaping area, this is a breakdown of how I came up with that, with the setback, where we were in all of that, and the total areas that comply. So you can review that in the information you have. The open space is within the current landscape area. We confirmed through Ben and our engineer that we will be looking at the drainage study that will be revised is, will be based on a maximum impervious area, the site is 70%. Right now, if you look at the box that's highlighted in red, Karen wanted us to give her some additional information. So right now, we are somewhere between how you calculate the area based on the area of total and the area from the aerials, we are somewhere between 72% to 74% of that 70%. That make sense? Okay? So right now, what we have is there, and if we added the 2,200 square feet of the driveway proposed, we're probably going to be within that difference between the low and the high below that. So before I move on, in this area, we defined equipment staging, areas, snow storage, driving areas, material storage, equipment maintenance, equipment staging, driving areas, these are all things that are existing right now. Any questions so far on this plan? Okay, could you put up the next one? Now, these areas that are listed on this plan are not dimensional. You know, it's not like the driveway is 15% 15 feet wide and 250 feet long. It's as a percentage of the site, because the issue is water quality, not water detention. So we're well below the requirements at this point. Now, if we look at the conditional use compliance plan, again, go to the box in the lower-left corner. There is a picture of the fence that we are proposing. So one of the conditions that they had in the, in the report is the fence. That's it. The new driveway is on there per the application. We have two future PLDs shown. One of the things that was interesting, and I have to credit Ben for this, was instead of going with one spot, big square box or something, he suggested that we might consider a more linear approach where water could come in from the whole site into this porous land detention area. So we ended up, if you look at the far northeast corner, just below the right corner of the box, that's going to be down here at this end, further down, Karen, all the way, keep going all the way where the road turns to the left. There you go. Keep going. Right, keep going a little more right... Right there is a little note that says PLD. This is an area that was preliminarily sized by the engineer to handle the drainage. If you can see the little aerials around the building, that would have handled the water going that way into that spot. So that would be the place where we would be able to detain water quality from that small section of the site before any water goes into Lloyd Gully. Then if Karen goes back to the big white box, that was the area that was resized based on the preliminary drainage report, which showed the, I think it was something like 60 by 65 feet and four feet deep, it held whatever was in the drainage report. So X times Y is the same area, so we made it more linear. And then she wanted a dimension on that, so if you can see, we redlined that. It's approximately 40 by 108 based on the preliminary drainage report. Obviously, the final report that the engineer does will define that in greater detail. So with that in mind, you can see we relocated the drainage areas to be able to take that in. And the idea basically is there's a hillside in there, the plan would be to be able to take that out, use that dirt to regrade and all that kind of stuff. And when we get into doing that, that'll be part of the retention PLD area construction, and we will be moving more than 7,500 square feet of material, so that a grading permit would be required for that. You'll also see in the box in the middle of the site that's red, it says maximum site impervious area is to be 70,000, or 70% or 94,819.2 square feet, and the pond would be sized to that figure, and that was the number that Ben used to come up with the... No, not the detention, it's the fees, stormwater management fees payable to the city at the time of ZDP. The issue with regards to the fencing, this is where we're going to ask you guys to do planning, because the code says if the fence is over six feet, it needs to be on the setback line. Parking does not need to be on the setback line. So we have to decide, would we rather have all the pretty trees behind the fence or partially behind the fence? Do we want to move the fence from the property line to 50 feet or somewhere in between? So from a logical standpoint of thinking, okay, we come in later and we build a building. Let's just take a picture of the driveway, and let's say over by that red box in the middle, we build another building. So the building will be behind the setback, the fence will be on the setback, but my parking area is going to be outside the fencing between the street, so I'm going to have unsecured parking. To me, it just didn't make sense. So as part of the conditional use permit, I think staff and us are going to be looking for something as to, what do you think would be appropriate? Is it property line and everything's hidden behind the fence? Is it property line and everything's hidden behind the fence, we don't have to worry about it, parking can go behind that in the setback, and buildings can go on the setback line in behind, don't know? I like to think for tomorrow rather than just today, that's why we call it planning. So that's kind of one issue from that perspective. I'd love to hear some of your input before I move on.
Staff have any comments on what's been discussed so far, or questions for Mr. Howes?
So Skip, in order to accommodate parking behind the fence, instead of in front of the fence, your recommendation is that the fence line be on, in front of the setback?
I'm quoting your code. The code says that the fence is over six feet, so here's my question. If I make the fence five feet eleven and a half and throw dirt up against the bottom, do I now have the fence anywhere I want it? I don't know. If the, if the code says parking is not subject to setbacks, so, you know, I mean, this is a construction site, we may have visitors, cars coming in, we may want stuff to park there, that, want to park overnight and be in a secured area. When you look at, for example, the conditional use permit you guys approved from Mallet, his fence is along the perimeter of the property, and all his stuff is inside behind the lock gate. So it's up to you guys as to, I think we need a recommendation as to where that's going to be, because then it would allow us to be able to plan for the landscaping and the open space and adjustments to it as the property gets developed in the future and future ZDPs come into play.
Question, we've got landscape requirements along Research.
You have an open space requirement along Research of twelve and a half percent of the site. The landscaping could be anywhere, we just showed it where it is right now, so we are in compliance with the current code.
Okay, 'cause my first impression, that in-depth look, you've got this nice bank of trees.
Right, let's keep it.
We'd like to keep those.
Right, so maybe it's, if it's twelve and a half percent represents, let's just say fifteen feet, because half of sixty-two is close to fifteen, if that represents, maybe that's the place to put the, put the fence and keep the trees between there and the neighbors. And now, with that in mind, then we say, okay, we can put our parking behind the fence in a secured area in our building at the setback line or beyond.
I'm just getting the impression from the drawings, we had that green squiggle, I thought that was the proposed landscape area.
It is, it is, and twenty-five percent, twelve and a half of which has to be, has to be against Research Drive. So if we decide whether it's twelve and a half percent, open space, or whatever that is, I'm just trying to get a feel for where we want to do this.
My first impression is we keep that as the landscape area, we put the fence on the inside away from the road with the screening, we keep the trees, we screen what's going on inside, and I guess your question is future development.
What's the inside? Where's the inside?
Well.
If I'm over five, six feet, I gotta be on the setback line. So I'm looking for some guidance, I can play the game if you want and build a fence that's five feet eleven inches. Or I get an idea that says, hey, let's keep the twelve and a half, half of the, half of the landscape area needs to be against the road, so if that's, just for grins and giggles, say thirty feet, then let's keep that thirty feet between the road and the fence and put the fence at thirty feet. Because whatever you guys recommend to council and council approves is what we end up doing.
Would that require a variance request?
No, I'm not so clear on, given the nuances of this code, but I do want to clarify something in terms of the, this section, eighteen point four-two point zero-three-zero on the height of fences, it reads, any solid fence within the front yard shall have a maximum height of thirty-six inches if on or within the front setback, and a maximum of seventy-two inches otherwise. So basically, anywhere from that front setback line towards the street is interpreted as the front yard.
It's not five-eleven, it's three feet.
It's thirty-six inches.
Up to six, yeah.
And then once you hit that setback line, then you can be at six foot.
Correct. And that's a one-site, this size fits everybody code.
So I apologize, but this is where I'm not very clear on how the Brooklyn Park code functions in terms of what authority the planning commission has around waivers or alterations versus what does need to go to Board of Adjustment for a variance.
It sounds like a variance issue.
Yeah, yeah, Board of Adjustment would have to make that decision, I mean, all we can do is make a recommendation, but common sense tells me, number one, you need at least a six-foot fence for security. And then, number two, the security is to ensure you're securing vehicles, so can we make as part of this action we take tonight, a recommendation that a variance be requested in order to have that fence at the perimeter? Is that what you're asking for?
I'm looking for some guidance, I don't know if the, you know, if council approves the condition we use permit with, with the conditions in it, the council's approved it. So they could ask for something phenomenal or ask for something stupid, one way or the other, but if they ask for it and we agree to it, it's what we got to do.
Well, I'm not even sure they could approve it, I still think it would have to go to the Board of Adjustment, but they would make that as their, you know, approving the CUP, they would have to make the, you know, say, in, we have to have this occur.
Maybe that's the city attorney question, and based on your recommendation to whatever, I'm just trying to get some guidance as to where we want to go.
Oh, great, let's do it now, it's down the road.
One suggestion that staff had had was that perhaps this gets, that difference is the fifty-foot is a very, fairly stout setback for the front, was perhaps the fence, the screening width landed at the twenty-five-foot point. Twenty-five foot is a more common setback that you see in a residential stone zone, you still have, you know, trees on the outside as well as the inside of the fence, since you still need a decent area for the landscaping, you need to make sure that that percentage is accounted for regardless of where the fence is.
Well, if it's at that twenty-five-foot setback line, will that accommodate his vehicles and be able to secure vehicles?
I'll make a comment, if you recall, that the fire department requested that the gate we were putting in for the new driveway be twenty feet back, or, what was it? Well, no, they want a twenty-foot width, I'm sorry. I think, I would say yes, I mean, from our perspective, I mean, that's, that's what we're doing in a lot of our residential houses, you know, the driveway, the cars parked within that twenty-five feet, but that's where the house goes, and we can get the fence back there about twenty-five feet, that's going to keep a real nice area along the road for the people across the street and Stone Ridge and those that have lived there. So, you know, I would say if that's what you guys would recommend, let's put it in the recommendation, if the city attorney says we got to go to a variance, we can put that in or council can turn it over to them, run it up the flagpole and let's see what the lawyers say.
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, just me too. I mean, what, otherwise, it's silly to have a fence at all if it's not securing anything.
Well, the purpose of the fence is screening.
Screening as well.
And that's the primary concern, so that the neighbors, you know, don't have to look at everything that goes out there. But this just popped up, to be honest with you, when Karen and I were talking about a week ago, or last week, I think it was, and we kind of went through the code of parking and fences and all this kind of stuff, it was like, oh my gosh, you know, well, let's let the planning commission give us some planning ideas.
Did you have anything else to present, Mr. Howes?
Yeah, a couple of comments. As we go down through the list of recommendations, Karen, if you could push those, pull those up, I have a couple of things I'd like to clarify in that. And I'm just going to go through to tell you where we are, number one, cool, we're okay with that, we've already started talking to people about getting stuff, I talked to a couple of people about hauling off the old dump truck. The final drainage report must be approved by the city engineer before a grading permit or zoning development permit can be issued. Two things on that, I'd like to have something in there that says, hey, the concept that we were dealing with was my engineer, based on what the city engineer gave us, is we will get an updated report back to Ben within sixty days of council approving that. I would like something in here to say, once we submit it, Ben needs to respond to it and give us his comments and approval within two weeks.
I don't think he can lay on the engineer a two-week timeline.
I don't care, just give some number.
Frankly, I thought the construction of this item was much improved last time, that it didn't say particular date when it would be done. The CUP can't come into effect until there's an engineering report that approves.
Well, the reason why I'm concerned is, is that we had submitted, two years ago, a driveway permit and started this process, and we resubmitted the driveway permit with the new drawing based on the fire department stuff two, three weeks ago. If I can't get my driveway permit approved until everything regarding all this stuff is done, I may not be able to get equipment in and out. The whole purpose of getting the driveway in is to make it safer off of Research Drive. So I'd like to get an answer out of the city engineer at some point before we go to council to find out where I am on my driveway.
And that, that would be great, but I don't see it as basically a condition.
Well, that's your call. You guys make recommendations and then we go up the chain. So I would like to be able to pull the driveway permit out of the multi-use, I've already paid the fee, it's already been submitted, we'd like to get an answer for that. On item number three, we're cool with that. Item number four says a single multi-use ZDP is required for the site improvements, including water quality detention, surface with addition to millimeters, the second driveway, and the screening. A final concept plan for the site is necessary in order to issue this. You got that. I've given you zoning compliance and a CUP compliance plan. So you have two plans right now that address both those issues. So the only thing they don't have is the drainage report. They have a preliminary drainage report, but not the final. So I think we have this. The fence is proposed to show where we got it, or where you guys say we're going to agree to it tonight, make a recommendation to council. Item number five, that's fine, item number six, I think I've listed on this concept plan, the storage areas, the equipment parking, the water quality detention, the screening, the landscaping, and the snow storage, so all that's on the plan you have right now. And then items seven through thirteen, we're cool.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Howes, at this point?
Happy to answer any questions.
The next issue, any questions for this applicant?
I agree with what Lee just said a few minutes ago about making a condition subject to city engineer responding. I don't think we could do that, I don't feel comfortable doing that. I think we could encourage the city engineer to work with an expedite in that manner.
Encouragement would be appreciated.
So if we leave everything as it is, as submitted by the staff, and then we, the only issue that we should discuss would be the screening, actually, and I have no problem with a five-foot, eleven and three-quarter inch fence that does not have to meet the setback.
Well, no, I think.
It has to be three feet.
Three feet to six feet.
Three feet. That would, that's not a good security.
I must fit my gap there.
Well, I, I, if we can add that as a condition to the motion for approval, it would be consideration of a twenty-five-foot setback for a six-foot fence pending requirement for a variance request, Board of Adjustment.
So just as a question, Karen, if we in the conditional use permit, put a condition in that, that we agree that the setback can vary from the fifty-foot setback requirement, does that authorize it, or does he still?
No.
It still goes to the millerage, but we just put it in there that we recommend that the fence could move closer to Research to accommodate his equipment and still provide shielding, screening, and landscaping and trees being preserved? If I could suggest, Karen, could you bring up code section eighteen forty-two point one hundred?
Thank you, David. That section reads, where by reason of extraordinary or exceptional situation or condition peculiar to a piece of property, the strict application of any provision of this title would result in an exceptional demonstrable unnecessary hardship. The city manager orders designated shall apply to grant a variance from such strict application so as to relieve such demonstrable difficulties or hardships. Any applicant may appeal the decision of the city manager orders designated to the Board of Adjustment. This pertains specifically to the fence provisions, since eighteen point four-two relates to fences, and the city manager, I have not consulted with Mr. Larson, I'm not fond of this, but.
It's, it seems that there's, this doesn't seem all that extraordinary, like, it's not like the sloping lot or some of this, any service commercial lot's going to have the same question. I mean, it's, it's, it's an approach, it's an approach that would allow, that would simplify the process if one granted that it applies.
Well, can we recommend that prior to city council action, that the city attorney render an opinion on that particular section?
Well, or another way, just, just simply say, we are of the, we are of the opinion that a twenty-five-foot setback for a six-foot fence would make sense here. And then, in connection with that, the applicant, I mean, you know, if Karen indicates that having had a discussion with the city attorney that this works, and the applicant would like to ask her.
It's the city manager designated.
Yeah, exactly.
If she designates Karen, then Karen makes the decision.
Exactly, and if, if not, if not, that would be the same, that would be the same observation from the planning commission that would support the fact, if, if you wish to go to the Board of, Board of Adjustment, that the planning commission thought it was a sensible idea. And so, that's our view, and wherever, wherever it fits.
Right, but the code is going to be, he's going to get a variance to the code by Board of Review.
No, it's the city manager, they're designated.
Or the city manager, they're designated.
City manager, if that works, and if not, then it's.
So what I'm hearing is not so much about how you get it done, but from the planning commission, it sounds like potentially consensus would be a recommendation of a twenty-five-foot setback for the six-foot fence, and then we get to figure out how to make that happen.
I don't know that we want to specify twenty-five, it could be twenty-two, it could be twenty-seven, by the time he gets it designed.
If you want to recommend twenty-five, we can go with that.
He would request a variance for whatever he decides is appropriate, and you guys would decide, but we're okay with it being different than the fifty-foot, is what I'm hearing.
I want to kind of put a stop to the discussion right now, because we do have some people in the audience and possibly online, and like to open the public comment section, so anybody on our list, David?
Yes, we do, Mr. Karen.
Thank you. We have Shirley Dowsett. Thank you, please come to the podium, give us your address.
I'm Shirley Dowsett, I live at ten sixty Research Drive, I am one of the two residential properties directly across from this property. And I've been there for fifteen years, the house though has been there for twenty-five years. And when we bought the property, we asked, what is that little green building across the street there? And we were told it was a storage building for a building contractor. I said, okay, storage building, that's fine. But we've seen over fifteen years that we've been here, the scope growth already on that property, and that being the lame excavating that moved in and brought with it many, many trucks, vehicles, backhoes, excavators, whatever you want to call all of that equipment. And what I've been concerned all along has been noise, it is not a quiet little storage building on that property anymore. So I'm looking forward, and I know you can't look forward beyond what's on the table, but how much more does this residential neighborhood have to put up? Every day, all day long, dust to dawn, as you say, or going to dusk, the equipment comes out of the gates, out the road, back and forth, all day long, dump trucks through the property, or if you're down Research, through the property to the back, and boom! back, and boom, dumping loads all day long on some given days. That's a lot to put up within a residential neighborhood. Never complained, and in fact, I've used lame excavating to do some work on my property. It's not about the business, it's about the neighborhood. So I'm just concerned about where does this go in the future? He's talking about the possibility of another building. That building would be right at the end of my driveway. Already, every vehicle that comes in and out stops in front of my driveway, gets out, opens the gate, drives in, comes back out, parts in front of the driveway, closes the gate, goes on, happens all day long, every day. Moving it down, moving the driveway down the street, that'll be a benefit, actually, if they're not going to be using the existing gate, they're going to be using the other gate. That's fine, but it's just pushing the problem down the road, which is going to be directly across from the new houses that are going to be built in the Robert Ranch. Cul-de-sac has been put there now, which is going to put more houses there. So my concern is, where does this go in the future? And that's what I think this committee needs to be concerned about, is what it's doing to the neighborhood. The neighborhood has grown considerably since that one little building was put there many years ago, and how much farther do you push that in what is really now a residential neighborhood? And the noise and the traffic, I'm glad you're concerned about parking being inside the fence instead of outside. If parking was outside, you'd have all of that trying to get on and off of Research all the time on what is now a two-lane street with a lot of, that's the only way in and out of the whole neighborhood. So all that traffic constantly is up and down that street. So all of that is my concern, and I'd just like to leave it with you to make sure, and whoever's sitting in your seats in the future recognizes, this is a residential neighborhood. It's not a commercial neighborhood or a commercial zone. Why it's there as a commercial zone, that's a problem. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wishing to come forward and make comment? Do we have anyone online?
That's going to take a few minutes, since it appears that they still have issues in terms of hearing us. So, Dave, I don't know if you want to try and moderate that with a message out to the public group? Or if you're able to just, I don't know, I don't know what your options are back there from the technology standpoint.
I'm not sure either. I think maybe we can put up with some of that.
For the sake of hearing enough, probably a good idea.
We're staying naked here now.
Do we have, I guess if you have comment or question, if you could raise your hand online?
I have a message.
Sorry, another raises hand here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, hello.
We couldn't hear you, so that's why there are any questions. You're disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no questions. Mr. Harry, a response to the public comments? Okay, then, any further discussion on what we've heard tonight? So are we in a consensus then that relocating the fence to 25-foot setback?
We close public comment? I have some various discussions.
Okay, very good. Officially, yes, I should close public comment. No one from the audience coming forward and not seeing any online. Public comment's now closed. Thank you. Did you have some comments?
Yeah, a couple things. We're looking at the conditions, which my general sense is, and this is notwithstanding a comment from a neighbor, which I have been concerned, I was one of the reasons last time, I said, "Let's identify setbacks on the lake and the map, and let's look at it to see." We do want to keep the landscaped area, keep some setback. I think it's even acknowledged that having a setback of some sort of a fence, and the cars inside the fence, was an improvement from some other way of doing it there. Anyway, looking at some of the conditions. The first one, and as the applicant didn't comment on this, this is structured as it was previous time. Prior to November 1st, the property was clean out litter and debris from the site, the old truck concrete debris.
Question, what happens if it doesn't, if that doesn't happen? Is that, at that point, I think Mr. Howell raised his point the last time, does the CUP go away, or is that simply, in theory, the city has an opportunity to come in and say, "Do it"?
It's not tied to the CUP as it might have been previously, but if he does not get that done by the deadline, we do have that ability to pursue under our code enforcement.
Okay, so his conditional use permit won't be an issue, but his compliance is an issue?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. The, see, the second one, we commented briefly before, but if a final drainage report is needed from the city engineer, then it's needed from the city engineer. We hope it happens timely, but when it happens, it happens when it happens. It does raise a question, which maybe you could help explain, clarify from a little bit, because the way it's worded, the final drainage report must be approved by the city engineer before a grading permit or a ZDP can be issued. We're mixed, we are mixing in here ZDP conditions and CUP conditions when the role of the planning commission is, condition of use permit. And I think this is another subject we discussed in our previous meeting six weeks ago. We're not a competent authority to issue ZDPs or really to say what conditions are may or may not be. And so I think there's some confusion here, and maybe if you could give some comments, I would help me understand it better.
Somebody's doing a subdivision. They get their construction drawings for the infrastructure, which includes drainage, approved for construction by the city engineer before we issue the zoning development permit for the infrastructure construction. So if this is a similar application of that, or what I'm trying to be is a similar application of that, you need to get your construction drawings approved before we issue that zoning development permit for the actual construction.
All right, well, as, just, as written, this would seem to indicate if the drainage report is not, is not done, it's still floating around, that that would, that the CUP goes ahead anyways and is granted. Because this seems to say, this is, that's a separate matter. It has nothing really to do with the CUP. It's sort of a, "By the way, in order to get your ZDP, of course, you need the engineer to review the drainage."
The list of conditions does state some things that seem obvious, but it helps put everything together in one place. So both staff, the applicant, the planning commission, everybody has a common place to go back to in terms of what was agreed to. So the conditional use permit, we see, yes, we're going to issue this, and these are the things that we want to see happen. And associated with this conditional use, yes, we get your driveway, but we want to make sure that you have your drainage addressed wholly and are able to get that on your construction concurrently with getting your driveway equipment placed, is our approach.
That, no, that works for me, and I got it, and I follow that. That does mean that some of these things in here are information to really what we're doing. And that's okay, as long as we understand that's what it is. Number, number three is clearly like that, just a grading permit's needed if there's a special grading done or similar. Number four, I think the applicant referred to, I guess, do we need the last sentence, "A final concept plan for the site is necessary in order to issue the ZDP"?
Yes, it's stating the obvious.
That's the concept, but is that different than the plans we're looking at?
It's what's here. I just want to make sure that we want that completely together, finals dimensions, that it coincides with the drainage report. We need everything to work together. So when you get all that established, then you can, we all know what's going on, and there's no discrepancies between the different things.
Okay. Is everybody clear then that the final concept plan is the same plan, it's not saying a new plan?
And I understand you're conferring. My assumption is that all of these requirements, whether it's for the CUP or a ZDP, are not in aggregate anywhere else, and this gives you an opportunity to show all of the requirements, but we have no authority to approve or disapprove of the ZDP.
Correct. It's a way of just making sure that information shows up.
It's no, it is no other place.
Dave, did you have, you have, well, there's a checklist.
There's a list of things that have to be submitted to ZDP to get approved, and that includes the site plan.
And part of it is a little awkward, is the strict site plan is highly detailed, and since we're trying to take a lighter approach to this, since it's an existing use to bring in any compliance, that's why we keep calling it more of a concept site plan, or kind of a concept plan for the property. So not all of that is, you know, really being tied into this. So it is, you know, a lighter approach to that, so that's part of the desire to have it all in one place.
I had only one more, I count one more in the condition, and it's number five, all applicable fees are going to be paid, i.e. stormwater based upon a previous area at the time of the ZDP. I think there was some discussion six weeks ago when we found this too, is that there could be other fees in the future?
And we narrowed it down that this is the one that applies in this case.
Okay, so I, all currently applicable fees are going to be paid, other fees may apply to future development. And I'm just saying, we're trying to be clarified, and maybe, when I read this, I thought it said, "We're all done with fee," and we may or may not be. If there's something in the future, then there is.
That would be evaluated at that time.
Okay, but this suggests it's like, like we're paid up generally, at least that's the way I read it, if we get stormwater fees in.
Are you suggesting adding the word "current" to all current applicable fees?
Yeah, that, that was my wording. I definitely want to say that, then, as the question is, should it say beyond that, "Other fees may be applicable to future development"?
Yeah, we put a new building permit in front of pay a tap fee, we'll pay those tap fees at that time.
Does that wording fit, is, and this is part of, the educational part, the informative part here.
Well, and there was a future condition, when I had other future things in there, the last time we were asked to take that out, so it's kind of, I'm sorry, ironic that you're putting one in, but that's okay.
Well, I wasn't here last time, so you pointed on me. I would add it.
Okay. And the other was on a new point, I think, we said we wanted to, we wanted to recommend a, something like, it is, it is the view of the commission that a reduced setback for a six-foot fence, a reduced front setback for a six-foot fence would be appropriate in this circumstance? Is that, would you like to say 25 feet or reduced?
Just reduced.
Just reduced.
Whatever works.
You could say a reduced one may be considering something around 25 feet.
Perhaps 25. Put in parentheses, I'm trying to-
I'd be more comfortable with a more definite definition, because reduce could be two feet. I mean, like, to technicality, I would say minimum, if we're saying 25, I'd say, I'm not for 25.
Say 25, the city manager's designee says different, and if we don't agree, we have a process.
There you go. Do you agree with 25?
I'd be comfortable with a more definitive.
I would, too.
I'd prefer 50 to keep all the trees, but depending on your landscape requirements in the future.
Landscape the drainage area.
Any other discussion, Daniel? Looks like Lee's drafting some words.
It is the view, this would be 14, then, it is the view of the commission that the front setback is applicable to a six-foot fence should be reduced to 25 feet. You want Karen, I'll give this to you when we're done, is that right?
It's just for the fence, no, correct.
It is the view of the commission that the front setback is applicable to a six-foot fence should be reduced to 25 feet. So some other meaning of front setback buildings or those that isn't touched.
I have just a matter of clarification. I think Karen actually answered the question a few minutes ago inadvertently, when she called this a concept site plan. I think that it needs to be consistent between what we're talking about here as conditions and what we see coming back here from the decisions from the act. So let's use the word concept, concept site plan.
Although, 18.34 says that a site plan is required for a conditional use permit. It has to have a site plan.
And that's where, you know, I'm kind of coming in the middle, but the fire director, I've been working with the applicant, and there's a fair amount of disruption in our office, and was dialing some of that back in the name of just getting the existing use into compliance. So I was working off of other commitments, and, you know, the greater goal really is the compliance of the existing use, because the use is going to continue, but there are improvements that we're going to be able to get taken care of through this process.
I guess there's some change we need, Larry, to affect your suggestion, or?
I think when we refer to such words as the final concept plan or a compliance plan or a zoning compliance plan, let's just go back to that, no, the name of the concept site plan.
What would that be?
Are you talking about the last sentence of section up here, item four, a final site slash concept plan? Is that right?
Final concept site plan. Then when the final plan's estimated for review, it will, it must be on the same page.
See, I did try, through these conditions, to consistently use a final concept plan for the site or a concept plan for the site. Did try to be pretty consistent about that.
Would you modify your plan, Skip? Could you use that?
Just tell me what you want to call it, and we'll call it that.
Okay.
Any other comments or discussion? Because we'll be looking for a motion then.
I guess I have a little more comment to go with the motion, and that is, just to address Shirley's comment, this property was zoned and serviced commercial in 2004. Were you leaving it, your home at that time, or that was zoned?
No, but was it built till 2007?
Okay, so, so when the house was built, the property, I would like to call the name, was already zoned and serviced commercial. And this use is a conditional use in that zoning district, which provides for that subject to conditions, and we have gone through a pretty lengthy list of conditions. So I just wanted to let you know that I hear your concerns and the impacts that this property's zoned for the use.
Okay. Can I say something? The question is, what's allowed inside that use?
Well, we're looking at a contractor service.
Anyone else? I look at- I will, Ken. I move that we approve a resolution as recommended in the material provided by the staff for approval of conditional use permit with the following changes. Condition five, "Current" be added after "all," so it reads, "All current applicable fees are to be paid," there's a parenthesis that we did use after that, and then adding a second sentence, "Other fees may apply to future development," period. And adding an item 14, "It is the view of the commission that the front setback as applicable to a six-foot fence should be reduced to 25 feet." Any others?
Looking for a second?
A second.
Very good. Karen, if we could take a little call and vote?
Commissioner Hartman?
Oh, yes.
About Florida.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair Hartzell?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
All right, thank you. concludes our public hearings for the evening. We'll be looking for our reports. Karen?
Just a couple of items to note this evening. The first is, we have a new senior planner on staff. I know. September, yeah, I know. I think our whole staff is still applauding that. Her name is Chelsea Stromberg, and she comes to us from both the city's rooms and public. She's worked for both those communities, so just has some experience, and we're just very excited and thrilled to have her on board. She will have a couple of items in front of you at the next meeting, so you'll get to see her in action. And then the next item is, I guess, a little sad, that Commissioner Alagunji has needed to resign from the commission. His work parameters have changed, so he just doesn't have the same time available anymore. So we look forward to any suggestions you may have, to recruit somebody else to help serve on this commission. The other item we were talking about during one of our odd technical breaks is, on next Thursday, the 5th, there is that joint work session with the city council, this board and city council regarding short-term rentals, and the time for that is 5:45. And it's a little bit of an odd time, but there's something going on right before that, so we're trying to coordinate between, I mean, a couple of things. So 5:45 in this room next Thursday for that work session.
And Karen, just for that, the city manager will be presenting, or someone acting for him will be presenting, and our role is sort of hear, listen, discuss, try and solicit input from the city council and that sort of thing too, but the only presenter is really someone, the city manager or a staff member.
Correct. Yeah, it is a work session, so that's really us as staff relaying information, and the objective is to lay down a baseline of information on this topic. We've done quite a bit of research, and so, you know, what are our findings around all that? So it creates a starting point for both the planning commission and city council to start to think about what policy would be needed, you may want to generate or create around this. What level of regulation, if any, or what are the next steps? Do we go out for additional public feedback around that as part of developing regulations? Or what level of regulation is appropriate? So it's really a starting point for that whole policy conversation. At some point, should it be determined that we want to regulate this, an ordinance will be written, and then there would definitely be a public hearing process around the adoption of the ordinance, if we have those regulations in them.
Just to be clear too, in case for people in Zoom who are watching, I understand that there is no public comment at this, this is for?
It's just a work session, whereas where we relay, the staff relays information to both commissions, and I'll definitely answer any questions you all may have at that point. But it really is that baseline of information.
I think for me, Lee, I think it's very important in the work session that we hear some of the opinions of the city councils at that time, and then we have our own opinions, and we can do that as we correct that code.
I anticipate members of the public being in attendance, and I think it's going to be very difficult to suppress any comments they may have.
I went to other communities where the work sessions were very much the norm, and they were definitely open to the public, the public's welcome to attend, encouraged to attend, but that format is not set up for comment. Those comment periods happen at other points in the process, but I've seen that be a challenge in other communities, so I do recognize that.
Is there something, maybe, or post something, kind of warning that this is what this type of meeting is, and what's the type of thing, or?
I'm not sure how the city clerk has approached that, but I can attest to it.
I can't hear when your microphone's off, and you got a mask on.
She was asking if there was a way to make sure the public would advance what the expectations were around how the session is formatted, you know, so that, basically knowing in advance there is not that opportunity to comment.
That's part of the reason I mentioned now, too, if people are hearing about it.
Sorry, Lee, yeah, I was trying to just follow up and ask if there's a way to notify them that there wasn't, so there's not a motion later.
So, thank you. I'll check for that in a moment. So this was from my, oh, I'm sorry, I did have one last time. Just a quick reminder that if you were not able to attend a planning commission meeting, please just let us know in advance, and otherwise, that's all I have for your audience.
Thank you, Karen. Any comments from commissioners?
Just confirming that our next meeting is on the 12th. Yes. It's like the Thursday's name.
Very good. Nothing else? It's 8:05. Meeting's adjourned.
I'm ready to go.
I appreciate you doing that.
And we need to require you to come to next Thursday, noon. It's the same as, it's highly encouraged, you know, it's the same as if you're not using it.